Anybody who calls me in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Bannan.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Tutton.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
In court.
Okay, next time will be the indication by Mike Cassidy of Facey and I Methodist Church, followed by Bloods and Legions for our overheads.
First great. Christian Florida, thank you for this opportunity to gather together to do your good work for the city of Grand Valley, as it has been blessed with meaning that you speak into our hearts and our minds as we discuss important matters. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Bloods and Legions, symbolize of the United States of America, in a true republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, next time is the approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Say no changes, move on to proclamation. We have two for the community shredding event for Allen Lefco Bank of Grand Valley and Jeff Smith from State Bank. It would be Bank of Grand Valley first.
First proclamation for the Bank of Grand Valley, whereas on October twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, the Grand Valley Police Department hosted their annual community shredding event in which citizens could bring in documents for safe and secure disposal, whereas approximately thirty-five hundred pounds of documents were turned in for shredding on that day, bringing the total turned in since two thousand twelve to over twenty tons, whereas the community shredding event is intended to reduce the potential of citizens becoming victims of fraud and identity theft, whereas the Bank of Grand Valley has been a strong supporter of the shredding events by providing financial assistance for use in the expense of the shredding truck, whereas Mr. Allen Lefco Bank of Grand Valley has coordinated the support of the bank and helped make these community shredding events very successful and popular with the citizens of Grand Valley. Now therefore be it proclaimed, City of Grand Valley Board of Alderman and I, Mayor Mike Todd, acknowledge the benevolence of Mr. Allen Lefco and the Bank of Grand Valley, non hustler, in this here of this thirteenth day of November, two thousand seventeen.
I hear you told your birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, what a very good.
Well, well, it's a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Second proclamation for me. State Bank of Missouri Jeff Smith, whereas on October twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, the Grand Valley Police Department hosted their annual community shredding event in which citizens could bring in documents for safe and secure disposal, whereas thirty-five hundred pounds of documents were turned in for shredding that day, bringing the total turned in since two thousand twelve to over twenty tons, whereas the community shredding event is intended to reduce the potential of citizens becoming victims of fraud and identity theft, whereas State Bank of Missouri has been a strong supporter of the shredding events by providing financial assistance for use in the expense of the shredding truck, whereas Jeff Smith, State Bank of Missouri, has coordinated the support of the bank and helped make these community shredding events very successful and popular with the citizens of Grand Valley. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City of Grand Valley, Board of Alderman and I, Mayor Mike Todd, acknowledge the benevolence of Mr. Jeff Smith of State Bank of Missouri, signed this thirteenth day of November, two thousand seventeen.
Jump. Got to kind of put a name on that one. One more. All right.
All right. Next up is citizens' participation.
We ask that citizens come forward to the podium and microphone and address the board. And please give your name and address, since for the record.
She was in.
Mr. Mayor and Board, we have a special presentation this evening. I'm Mike Switzer with Legacy Plaza, with Pathways of Honor. I'm the Secretary of Pathways of Honor. If you want my address, I can do it, but you can just use like, uh, Pathways of Honor. I have with me the President and one of our Board members and the other Board member and the other Board member, uh, from our group, and we have a special presentation this evening. Uh, one of our challenges we have is with Pathways of Honor is finding veterans who will come forward and tell us their story. And, uh, I'm proud to say that you have one here in your group, uh, that was Man of the Year for the City of Grand Valley, very well deserved, but he also was a veteran. And after a little bit of research, we found out that he was one of many veterans in his family. And, uh, he had a brick, we had a benefactor who wanted to do a brick for him. And it's a Cook Family Veterans Brick. Starts with James R. Cook, WW Two Army, James E. Cook, WW Two Navy, John T. Cook, WW Two Navy, and then the person we're honoring tonight, James T. Cook, Vietnam Veteran. And the brick says, "We proudly served," or "We served proudly." James R. was World War One, sorry. So we had two, one World War One, two World War Two, and then the Vietnam Veteran. And, uh, tonight we'd like to present this to Mr. Cook, as we all know him.
And we also want to give you a picture of the all the veterans who are at the tribute on the day we dedicated our country. He didn't need to be there.
We have anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening?
My name's Paul Prue. I haven't been to one of these meetings before, but I wanted to talk to you all about disability people in Grand Valley. I put up a fence for an autistic boy and had some issues with it and wanted to talk to you about it. Do I do that now or what?
Yeah, sure, next one, yep.
I'm just a fine PA coach. I coached a boy in soccer and baseball for a few years, and I met his brother, who was seven years old, and he's autistic and is nonverbal. And when I first met him, the mom had to go inside, and she, he's a runner, and I don't know if you know what that means, but he, he won't stay put and he doesn't listen. And she said, "You gotta just hold him." So I was trying to watch him and I wanted to be respectful to him, but I had to hold him by the collar because he wouldn't run away. And she said, "Either that or put a leash on him." And that really bothered me, and so we got a group of guys together and built a fence for him. And the city said it didn't pass inspections because it was not chain link or wood. And so we tore that one down and then put up a new one, which costs more and is smaller, and he can't get any sunlight in it, it's too small. The, um, the lady was renting a house, she plans to move in a month, in a, I'm sorry, in a year, and so she didn't want to spend much money on it. The landlord wouldn't pay for the fence. So what I, what I asked for the mayor on October twenty ninth is, I gave you some language that I'll read, "To accommodate a person with a disability, the Board of zoning adjustment at its discretion can allow variance to the safety and welfare of the individual." And you replied, Mayor, on October twenty ninth that you would talk to the city attorney and see what we could do going forward. And I just wanted to see if any progress had been made.
Yeah, Mr. Cook today. Uh, I remember I forwarded this on to you regarding the fence, and, and we had discussed it, and I don't think you felt that, uh, what's the word before you read on to, that it was hard to, the thought was harder to find what would be?
Yeah, it was hard, there is a process in place right now, the variance process that somebody can go through. Um, I think the, the ultimate issue was that the zoning code, no single person can, can make a waiver to the zoning code. Uh, there is a process to get a variance from the.
Yeah, and that costs like a couple hundred dollars, I remember. And so we were, she didn't have much money, we're just trying to help this little seven year old boy. And so I just wanted to know what the city could do to better help someone going forward if they need special, um, help, that the permitting process could, could make some exceptions and be flexible.
I, the board has to make any exceptions to the permitting process, but as far as the code of ordinances, that's, that's statutorily required, so the state of Missouri is the one that sets the, the rules for, for zoning. Um, I'm very familiar with the situation that you're talking about.
Yeah, and one thing, I called you many times and you never called me back, Mr. Hunt, so that was frustrating.
Is that so?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I never got a message from you.
Yeah, I, there was several of them.
Anyway, the.
And writing.
Okay. If you could forward that to me, that'd be great.
Okay, I would.
Um, so Mr. Cook looked into, uh, the state statutes, and the state statutes do not permit just arbitrary waivers from it. So once you have a code of ordinances, you have to follow that. And in order for that to be waived, it has to go through a Board of Zoning Adjustment. And the Board of Zoning Adjustment, uh, there's several different hardships that the state requires be met before there can be a waiver from the, the board. I thought the way that, that you guys handled it coming together as a, a group and a community was a great way to do it, the city's hands were tied as far as waiving any, uh, laws or special rules in that situation. It just, it wasn't an, an option unfortunately.
So, um, you're saying that no city in Missouri can make exceptions to the permitting code?
Uh.
To, to help disabled people?
I am not aware of, of any statutes that, that allow that. Mr. Cook, do you have?
Well, there're two. I'm Jim Cook, City Attorney, and, and both the mayor and, uh, and Ryan, uh, contacted me to discuss it several times. And, um, I think my, in addition to the problem with the variance and what city procedures that must be followed, the other issue was the permission from the property owner.
Right.
And, um, the property owner has to be the applicant to say, "I want a, I want a variance on my property."
Yeah, I would, I came down, they told me I could do that, so I, I didn't know that that was.
I don't, I don't rely.
A little bit, two hundred bucks or whatever it was, I could file it.
Well, you have to have the consent, permission of the property owner to put a fence on the property. And that's one of the.
We did, we did.
What's that?
We had consent.
You had consent.
As long as it wasn't permanent and she didn't have to pay for it, we could help the boy.
Okay.
Yes, my name's Paul Prue, D R U E.
Rick, can you kind of outline that?
And my phone number is eight one six, seven two one, four zero six.
Just for some clarification.
Seven two one.
Yeah, four zero six four.
And that's where it's located.
I, I live in Grand Valley, the fence was Grand Valley, um, by the funeral home.
Okay, I'm just gonna check you out, so.
Okay.
And I have two close things I better get set up.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I've seen a lot of volunteer work in the community, and I'm not trying to blame the process now, but I wanted proactively to move forward. Uh, the mayor told me one time that there was a girl in a wheelchair that needed a special access, a ramp, and so that you had to do a little bit extra work in the permitting process to allow that.
And they need to, because we did, because that, we, they went through the.
Yeah, we did.
Variance, and I think you helped to raise the money to.
Okay, well, that's why I said you do that.
Because we tried, we couldn't waive the fee. We thought originally we could waive the variance fee and we found out we couldn't.
Why, why can't we waive?
Well, keep in mind, well, keep in mind the fees are, whenever you do a variance, people a hundred and sixty feet have to be notified, so we do have to send out notifications to all those individuals, so that's where the fee comes in. Uh, but keep in mind, in this case, when we did speak with the property owner, the property owner didn't want a fence. Um, they didn't want to have to maintain it. They did get with the renter.
Right.
And resolved the issue, but.
Well, the landlord, what she found out the city didn't want, she said, "No, why don't you get in trouble with the city? I don't want you involved with that."
Well, just, I mean, from what we, what we experienced from her is that she didn't want the actual fence to begin with.
Okay, that's not why.
Um, but in any case, uh, that is the process, I mean, the variance process is the process.
Okay.
And so it's not as if there is no process to ask for those changes, uh, but we just have to follow those statutes with the variance. And so that is the cost. And so I know, I mean, there's.
Very strange thing, that's recovery, recovery cost, you gotta.
Well, no, because of, because of the notifications, exactly.
But you're trying to recover this.
Correct. That, that's the purpose for the fee.
Okay, we can't waive that. That's not a refundable variance fee.
Well, again, it's, it, you know, it's not something that's been waived in the past, I mean, there's no.
Missouri only do that.
I mean, I guess that would be a question.
Uh, I asked that question.
Yeah, that's, uh, we're sending out certified mailers to every property owner within a hundred and eighty-five feet. I think that the thought with not waiving that is that it shouldn't be expected that the other residents carry the cost of that variance request, uh, and so that's the purpose of the fee.
Yeah, I offered to get a, a written letter from every neighbor and, and they said that wouldn't really help, so.
Right, yeah, we have to pro, provide public notice, the United States Postal Service certified mailer.
Well, um, I know you have all these rules and procedures that everybody has to follow, but I'm just trying to help a seven year old autistic boy, and it doesn't seem like I should have to go through this much stress to, to volunteer. It makes me want to just not do it anymore. So what, what can the city do, is there anything to help disabled people, uh, build whatever they need for their benefit? That's a question.
There's a lot more to that. You and I will sit down and talk.
Okay. So I kind of feel like I'm walking away saying that there's nothing the city can do, that's my feelings.
Now, we have to give the two hundred dollars, is that what's your amount?
Well.
I mean, if, if it's something that's not, that's against code, then we have to go through the variance process. I mean, if it's something that's already covered in code, then it can be done.
Yeah, but I'm saying make an exception to the code, even though it might not meet the Missouri statutes, or just a, a small exception that the Board of Directors could authorize this and not have the variance in the, in the fee.
I don't know, we, we, what our stance on that is, I mean, we. Well, I mean, I think it kind of goes back to the spirit of what the codes intentions are. You know, in R one districts, you know, people would expect in their neighborhoods to have a certain standard, so chain link fence, fences, wood fences, uh, the plastic fences are allowed, and so anything that deviates from that, you know, the, the spirit.
I offered if we could put up a snow fence, and they said, "No, that's ugly."
Well, well, it's the, it's like the white type picket type fence, yeah, but, um, but in any case, the, the spirit of it is for properties to maintain a certain value with aesthetics, with the looks, and so that's the purpose of having that in place. Um, anything that goes beyond that, you know, residents around, you know, have the opportunity and should, and should have the right to say, you know, "This is my neighborhood." If something's going to change in that ordinance, to have the right to be able to come to a meeting, and that, that's the whole purpose of the variance process, um, and, and they can be opposed to it. And I mean, that's, um, good, bad, or indifferent, whether we like that process or not, that's the purpose of why it's there.
Okay, well, I appreciate you letting me view my opinion, and, uh, I hope that.
Sir, can I give you my phone number?
Yeah.
On my paper? We got it done the last time, so let's, let's start smiling.
But, because it's not refundable, the, the varies.
I understand, okay. I did it before. That's the mayor.
Sir, can we have your, uh, choose your street address as a record?
Um, my address?
Yeah.
Is H six one, Southwest Woodland Drive, Grand Valley.
And how do you spell your last name?
T, R, G, E, Eason Paul.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you later. You're back, sir.
Okay, yeah, I might eat those.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
All right. Say no, move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, I move we accept the consent agenda.
I vote for Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. We have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Arnold. Any discussions? Say no, and all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. Next is previous business. First item is liquor license application, Casatina's Enterprises, doing business as price shopper three twenty-five.
So, as you'll remember at our last meeting, per code, new liquor license has to come before the board for at least two meetings before final approval. Tonight will be the second meeting, um, and so it will be final approval tonight.
Okay.
So we'll need a motion to approve the liquor license.
Do I have a motion to approve the license?
Still moved.
Vote for Alderman Headley.
Seven.
Second Alderman. Coleman. Any discussions? Say no, and all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. All right. Next item of the previous business is two thousand eighteen budget discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, this is just on his previous business, that way staff can get the final approval to prepare ordinance for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget. Um, as you recall, we went through two different budget workshops. Uh, during those workshops, we made several different adjustments to revenues and, uh, expenditures, and I'm just gonna recap those changes that we made. Uh, as well, you, you should have gotten an email this afternoon with a, a new shared folder that includes budget documents, uh, and the, the approved budget. Um, if you have any questions about specific line items, we can visit. Basically, the, the summary of the.
Can you send that out in a different format, because I, I was unable to access this. The, Daniel, that, uh, that listed all the different items, purchase items that we undertake bids in the, in the budget, so.
Okay, yeah, and you couldn't. All right, yeah, we'll, we'll find a different way to process it. It was just PDFs and Excel's in there, so I don't.
It was, Dylan's gonna Google that, uh, opening or something.
Okay, yeah, I can take care of that. I'll get, get different versions of it too. Uh, in the general fund, we, uh, increased revenues by nineteen thousand as we found out that the victim advocate grant was going to be, uh, granted to the city for the part-time position. So on the other side of that, expense wise, we added the half of the part-time victim advocate in, uh, total cost with benefits was twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, we added an additional, uh, police officer into the budget, a, a total cost with benefits of fifty-five thousand dollars. And then the general funds portion of the, uh, expenses for, um, short-term disability was eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. So the total expense increase to the general fund per the, the budget discussions was eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Park Fund, uh, we added additional, uh, funds in there for trail design and engineering of forty thousand dollars, and short-term disability for sixteen hundred and fifty dollars for a net, the total increase is forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Transportation, we removed, uh, one of the pavement sensors that were going to be on the trucks. Uh, we removed the loader rebuild, uh, the motor for that at four thousand dollars, and we added the, uh, new loader, uh, that we discussed, and the transportation department's portion of that was twenty-six thousand dollars. Short-term disability, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total change of twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And then in water and sewer, um, we removed that motor rebuild, the same motor rebuild that we just discussed, uh, that was sixteen thousand dollars taken out. We added, uh, the new loader, which was, uh, the portion of that was one hundred and four thousand dollars, and then in short-term disability was seven thousand, seven hundred, I'm sorry, seven thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, for the total increase to water sewer of ninety-five thousand seven hundred dollars. So once we moved all of that into the funds, uh, made the changes that we discussed, the general fund comes out with a, uh, net surplus of fifteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Tourism, uh, tax fund has a net, uh, surplus of five hundred dollars. Parks and Rec has a, a net surplus of forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Transportation has a surplus of fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Public Health has a, a surplus of one thousand dollars. And then, uh, the Old Town Tiff, the Tiff in the GO accounts, I'll, I'll hit real quick, but you know how those are, they're ins and outs for the most part, uh, there's, it's a zero, a break even on the Old Town Tiff. Capital Improvement Fund is a sub-surplus of twenty thousand dollars. GO Bonds, uh, is a, at zero, no net increase or decrease. The Marketplace Tiff, Project Two is the same at zero. Marketplace Tiff Reserve for Project Two is at one hundred thousand dollar surplus. Marketplace Tiff Project Two Special Allocation, uh, is at zero dollars. Marketplace Tiff, uh, IDA Bonds is at sixty-eight thousand dollar surplus. Marketplace NID, Project Two is zero. Marketplace NID, uh, debt is at zero. Marketplace CID, Sales and Use, is at eight hundred and seventy dollars of a surplus. Marketplace CID, Project Number Three, zero dollars. Uh, the interchange Tiff for Projects One, Three, and Four is at a net surplus of one hundred and four thousand dollars. The Debt Service Fund is at a surplus of two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And we have a water department, or water and sewer. Sorry, I got that out of order. Water and Sewer Fund, uh, the net total is thirty-six thousand six hundred and nine dollar surplus. So overall, when you look at all of the funds, uh, for the, the citywide, we have a approved budget of a surplus of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. With that budget proof, I will answer any questions, but essentially, this is not any sort of approval or formal endorsement, uh, I'm just looking for an indication from the board that you're prepared for us to put together final budget documents, get them to you for a first reading of the ordinance on November twenty seventh.
Questions or comments regarding that?
How did you send that out? Because I didn't get any memo.
It was in an email.
It was in an email.
It was pretty late today, though, I mean.
Yeah, it was this afternoon.
It was late today, five or so, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty eight this afternoon. And it, essentially, it's the final version that I, that I just read to you, but it's what you guys will see once I get the nod from the board this evening, uh, to prepare the ordinance will, um, we can get hard copies, electronic copies, whatever you would prefer, but the, the shared folder was just an easy way to continue to update documents, uh, for the board and staff.
Could you use some of that surplus to put in a thousand?
Sorry, I got that out of order. Water and Sewer Fund, uh, the net total is thirty-six thousand six hundred and nine dollar surplus. So overall, when you look at all of the funds, uh, for the, the citywide, we have a approved budget of a surplus of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. With that budget proof, I will answer any questions, but essentially, this is not any sort of approval or formal endorsement. Uh, I'm just looking for an indication from the board that you're prepared for us to put together final budget documents, get them to you for a first reading of the ordinance on November twenty seventh.
Any questions or comments regarding that?
How did he send that out? Because I didn't get any memo.
It was in an email.
It was in an email.
It was pretty late today, though, I mean-
Yeah, it was this afternoon.
It was late today, five or so, wasn't it?
Yeah. Five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty eight this afternoon. And it, essentially, it's the final version that I, that I just read to you, but it's what you guys will see once I get the nod from the board this evening, uh, to prepare the ordinance. We'll, um, we can get hard copies, electronic copies, whatever you would prefer. But the, the shared folder was just an easy way to continue to update documents, uh, for the board and staff.
Could you use some of that surplus to put in a thousand dollars to waive that penalty to cover your costs? You got a hundred and sixty thousand surplus, is that what you said? Could, could I recommend that you do that?
Well, I mean, there's a lot more to it than just that. I mean, it's, I mean-
There's a lot of kids that need help.
Well, I, I, sir, I'm a special education teacher. I, I know firsthand.
Okay, thank you for that.
So, I know. I mean, you know, I wish, you know, more could be done, but, you know, unfortunately, our hands are tied on the fight.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we getting the new loader, right?
It's included in that.
Included, but that, those are expenditures that still have to come to us.
Okay.
Sir, I, I know we talked about it, or an additional position in public works, uh, be an engineer or an inspector, or is it person of?
Uh, it's an engineering inspector. It's a, it's, uh, an inspector for public works, developing a project, that, that sort of thing, so.
Okay. So I know we did talk much about that position. I know there was some comments about did add developments requiring that. While I don't have a problem putting it in the budget, I think before we fill that position, I'd like to have more, uh, concrete justification for that position before we put it in place, you know?
Absolutely, and I've got justification, um, sheets that I, that I can share with you. It's what Rick worked off of during, during the budget process and presentation, so I've, we can definitely get you the numbers, that sort of thing.
When I went past, we had multiple in there, and we had to cut back, and we rolled back, and, you know, just don't know if we wanna get in the, adding into the phis- physician, just, it's borderline. And then later have to reduce, and then have to cut back, or somehow absorb him into the, something else, so just wanna make sure we get the justification under with it.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll include that.
The intent of the added police officer, would that still, would the, would the intent of that still go through the academy, the process that you mentioned, chief?
It's, it's a budget already included, the, the costs associated with soft drinks going through there, uh, this, actually, and lock it in.
I have a question, Ryan. What, what is the variance from the proposed, from the projected twenty seventeen budget to the proposed twenty eighteen budget?
I, Alderman West, I started to work on that the other day. The problem is, is that we don't have complete forecasts for twenty seventeen. We use forecasting on specific revenues that, that we had to consider to adjust here. I am working on that, that answer, but I don't have it for you tonight. So we have, essentially, what, what we have to do is come up with a year-to-date estimate and forecast that for every line item to come up with that number. And the, I mean, the, the software does that, but there's certain purchases that come early in the year that the software accounts for on a monthly basis, and it's just not an accurate number. So, um, as Kathy and I were working on the budget amendment, uh, it's, one of the items that I'm trying to drill down is that information specifically.
Okay, I think it's important that we be able to track one year from another, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Both in expenses and revenue.
We will go through that exercise and have it prepared for you before the approval.
Okay, see no other previous visits? No new visits or presentations, move on to public hearing for Tiff progress for Molot Sybar Old Town Market.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, tonight we have a project, um, that is up for its five-year hearing. Uh, been through the Tiff process a few times, but it's never so exciting that anybody remembers or recalls all the details about the Tiff Act. So the idea is, you know, back every five years, and let you know how Tiff is performing.
We have a staff memo that I'm gonna hand out that goes, uh, through the presentation. The memo has more detail, uh, than the presentation, and probably more detail than I will cover unless there's any questions that come up. But tonight's public hearing is related to, uh, the Molot Sybar, excuse me, Molot Sybar, uh, better known as Old Town Market. Mr. Ward's development that he has at the southwest corner of Eagles Parkway, on Buckner Park.
As I mentioned, as we open up briefly, Tiff Act requires, uh, State Statute ninety-nine, uh, dot eight six five, dot three. Stiff, the Tiff Act requires that every five years, a city, uh, review, or the governing body review a project, make sure that the Tiff is making satisfactory progress towards the original Tiff plan and the intent of it. So, um, this is the second, uh, I'm sorry, this is the third Tiff, uh, public hearing about this project. And what we wanna make sure is, is that as we're going through it, that we provide consistent updates, so that when we get to the end of a project, and we see with the final number what the, the developer was reimbursed, uh, nobody's surprised. Uh, Mr. Ward was actually going to be here this evening, but he's got a family emergency, and that's, uh, that I passed out along with the board. Um, we wanted you guys to know that he was interested in attending and participating, but he was unable to. So, the project that we're talking about, uh, was done by Ward Development. Uh, the plan was submitted to the city of Spring Valley on April twenty second, two thousand two. And they, they had this, this plan for the entire corner, uh, developed, and kind of the idea that they contemplated is this Old Town Market look, and it's, you know, what you see down there. The board, uh, went through our F P process, and they accepted, uh, Ward Development's plan for that corner, uh, and approved the Tiff plan on June tenth, two thousand two. Um, once they, uh, once the Tiff plan was submitted and all the details were worked out, it was one Tiff plan with only one Tiff project. So if you think about the, the four corners, that's one Tiff plan with four different project areas inside of it. This is a single Tiff plan with one, one Tiff project. And the board gave final approval for the Tiff contract in August of, August of two thousand two. Uh, the public im- improvements and the project improvements that were, uh, part of the project were set out at the very beginning, and they were also set with completion dates, um, for the Tiff plan. So, Wyng, Eagle Parkway, Dorrit Street, Southwest Rock Creek Lane, um, Traffic Signal, Utility Insulation, Lake Improvement. Those were all public improvements that the project was going to do. You can see that they were all supposed to be completed by December thirty versus two thousand four, except for Traffic Signal, it was only being installed if it was warranted. The Traffic Signal was not, uh, ended up not being warranted, and you can see that everything else up in there was, uh, was completed before December thirty versus two thousand four, except for the lake improvements. Uh, and that's the areas just about, uh, on the north side of the Blue Branch Street, uh, the, the tension ponds down there. Um, those never did get completed, and actually, recently, uh, that, that property, um, was sold to, uh, we, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, the, 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 the contractor who's doing the string bank mitigation project down there, so that's only been included in the mitigation project, where there'll be a federal conservation. Um, private improvements that they planned on doing, which they have.
Ryan, sorry, apologize for interrupting you. So what are the implications of this one part of the plan not, not having been completed?
Well, the report shows that he could have received, bottom line is that their, out of the plan, the Tiff plan didn't occur as it's supposed to. And so the project will, will seem to have kind of been distorted over the years, never reached its full potential. I don't know what the legal implications are for that lake improvement, because we're just gonna get it signed out on that. But what it doesn't mean is that he will not be able to capture any, um, recon, from the debt for improvements that he did, you play. So there were some improvements that were not just as any of these.
Does the fact that that part's not complete hold back or create any kind of accountability for receipt of any other revenues from the other improvements?
I don't know. The plan, the Tiff plan, is, is the case, they have the speed reimbursement itself, but I think the question is, does this kind of, does this exact any burden reimbursement of the project that the property has actually changed? The reason that it's, if they, which is one of that I've never helped with before, is because, um, in Tiff plans, there's actually promises you have to go through to, um, sell properties, develop, or get rid of, which is a plus component of the project area, um, none of that happened. I knew that they were discussing, you know, the mitigation bank had an interest in that property, sorry, can't get the place doing that.
I have another one.
The bank had an interest in that property, but we got them to notice a sale. And recently, we wanted to get GIS to notice the ownership change on that. So, um, we, our, they, they love, um, it's, what you call, it's a, uh, the, uh, the implications.
Well, the traffic signal, where, where was that supposed to have been?
The traffic signal would have been down at Rock Creek and Buckner Park, correct, Rick? Um, it never treated warrants. Then there was also, um, discussion early on, and I have to go back to the Tiff plan, we'll get it. There were, there were two different considerations there, because there was one on Rock Creek, and then, and then there was one, I wanna say, in Garden, where it crosses, you know, over to the development and the foundation. There's four interesting right there, so neither of them warranted. Jackson County, um, Grove Way to South, and in two thousand three, when I was in Edward Park. Uh, the private improvements that he was supposed to, they were supposed to do for the plan was a hundred and forty-five thousand square foot retail space. That was supposed to be completed in December, December thirty versus two thousand four. Still not completed, if you take, um, the build out that he has right there, a hundred and eighty thousand square foot, uh, which is twenty-five percent less than the north of Edward. Likewise, on the villas, the residences that were in the plan, uh, supposed to be completed, that's angry, they were going to do that for them, so, yeah, twenty-five percent less than Edward.
And what, and what you're expecting to come back from this other attorney is the, I'll call it accountability, for the lack of a better term, of these criteria not having been met?
Yeah, there's specific penalties were originally been set for them, that, uh, when we were, when we were going to the northeast one, basically, with Star Development, and there was a lot of cash on Star Development, going to reverse the Star Development, sell the project. Um, in that case, it had the ownership, or notice of city fifty-eight, started to sell. He had to prove appearance of ownership, and apparently, uh, developers developed projects to, uh, purchase them. Uh, there's an entire series of things to check through. Question is, is he gonna be one of those that may progress the project normally for the plan, or, or the, 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 yes? Um, so the current status of the Tiff project, the total project cost in the plan is sixteen million dollars. It was revised, uh, to fifteen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because the track light was not warranted.
When we look at what the total spend was by, by the developer, unfortunately, uh, it's really difficult to tell what the total project costs are at right now. Uh, the city, we did an audit and a review of the records, um, conducted, or a re- review of the records for this report, and we found that we don't have copies of the developer certified redevelopment costs that are up to date. Um, Kathy and I have been working with Mr. Ward, uh, to get that up-to-date information. The, uh-
Reversal, each of that, so we have the total project cost, which was a joint cost, developer, and then how much that was to be reversed. Uh, six point one, six point one million dollars. Which was again revised because of, uh, the traffic signal not being included in there. And there was also this, this caveat that, that, that we also, that they find in the costs, uh, in, in the original Tiff plan.
Again, I think, I think that most of the board has been, uh, part of the discussions about the, the project.
At one time, Mr. Ward approached city and wanted us to issue some, uh, debt on behalf of him, uh, or debt that was supported or backed by the city, because of the ego. Right now, it is, hey, you know, he wanted, he wanted to reverse, uh, sooner rather than later. And when we went through that process, we realized that it wasn't, uh, performing up to, uh, up to some. And we would have been able to revenue, that service, saying that we would be able to prove those revenues that we have coming out of the project right now. Uh, so originally, they planned on six point one million dollars. The actual project, uh, reversements that, that eligible for is four million, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, which is thirty-two percent less than compared to. Uh, so this is the status of the plan and, and the revenues that are part of it. Opposed Tiff revenue, I typed, so we have- So, uh, Tiff revenues, uh, of fourteen million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and this, this is through year fifteen, so the Tiff plan is fifteen, it's twenty-three years long. And this is through year fifteen, uh, where, where it, it would have been had it all planned, so it should have generated fourteen point seven million dollars. Uh, and Tiff revenues of that, uh, would have been seven point five million dollars, pilots, which those are payments and lieu taxes, um, and then eat the, uh, economic activity tax, uh, seven point two million dollars. The assessed valuation as well was supposed to be at six point nine, just under seven million dollars, um, through this. Uh, that's not really a revenue, but it's kind of taking the value on the building and, and the property taxes, whatever they raise off that. The actual Tiff revenue by type, um, the total revenue is six point two million dollars through year fifteen. We generated three point six million dollars of, uh, pilots, and three point six million dollars in heat. Uh, and a total assessed valuation of two point five million dollars, so when you look at comparings, and you can see project early, um, isn't on track or performing. Uh, the total Tiff revenue is only forty, forty-two percent of what was projected, um, a year from the, the pilots were only thirty-four percent, or only thirty-five percent, uh, what they should be. We have thirty percent of what they should be, and the assessed valuation of thirty, only, about thirty-seven percent of what was projected. So overall, we look at this project, and tell that it's, uh, this, if it wasn't built to, uh, to the plan, and then considering that I'm generating revenues that, um, the plan that.
So there is kind of three things, um, in the summary, and once you get back to the back- So there is kind of three things, um, in the summary, and once you get back to the back, uh, of my plan, or of the, the staff document. There's three things that it talks about as far as the plan of finance. Um, one specifically is that it's in passing, anticipated that the developer through his proceeds, prior on, on the record, will fund all of the redevelopment funding costs. Um, there's also anticipated that the Tiff revenue generated by the redevelopment cost will be paid, paid the reimbursement cost. And that the reimbursement cost will be paid fully, will be fully repaid in eight year, all spent, uh, the charge.
What I have saying is that the numbers we talk about, uh, should have been completely repaid by two thousand eleven. And, uh, where two thousand seventeen were still, kind of, that fraction of what, what the refunds came should have been, um, the... I ask that here because twice in a year, there have been discussions about, well, when the city issued debt, uh, for the old town market...
Uh, we didn't, we didn't get money that he was supposed to in the plan, and it's just a very simple, of course.
My answer, when that's been out in the fair time, it doesn't, it doesn't need to perform the same as the Tiff Plan, so we were saving on it, and that's not really complying with that. Uh, I just keep that statement in there because this way you manage with the, the mention of legal and a financial advisor this entire time. That not in the case of obligations will be issued, finance, reimbursement, product costs. And as a left, city or the Tiff management, I can, there's always a question, decide to issue such obligations. So you have the ability to do that, which is not advisable.
So really, what it boils down to is, um, there are some reimbursable costs that we have not been able to capture. That, that, there's costs that have not been certified to show what the true cost of this project ended up being. Um, our recommendation is just, staff's recommendation is that we just stay on top of, or continue to encourage the developer to, uh, fill the development with, you know, uh, businesses that are going to help meet, uh, his reimbursable costs and, and get that back to him. It's in his best interest that he does that. Um, we also recommend that, uh, Ward Development completes the plan, uh, according, or, or the project according to his Tiff Plan. And the final recommendation is that we recommend that the Board of Aldermen use extreme caution before approving any request for reimbursement to the developer through the issue of Tiff revenue bonds. Uh, like I said, we've been down that road twice now. I, I don't think that's the direction that the board wants to go, or at least, uh, not, not chosen to do so so far. Uh, if that's a good, uh, sign.
Sessions, if you have questions about the five year review, I think it's very similar to how we were used to.
Being the, and I knew that there was a lot of underdevelopment there. And where, and what we've reimbursed so far, where we are in the percentage of the reimbursed.
Oh, reimbursement?
We have reimbursed what we agreed upon project cost. And now we're kind of trying to figure out how to calculate, I guess you could say, the financing cost. We're looking for documentation for that.
So we've done our half of the agreement as far as project cost, yet he hasn't developed the project to full development plan.
He, he's only received project cost for what he spent, not what was in the plan.
Parts that weren't in the plan?
Have not been paid correctly. It's been, or what he has actually, they've spent...
That was kind of, we're frustrated who we're paying him something for, whether...
No.
I'm at little air to continue giving him money if he's not going to be forthcoming with the information we need to know that we're giving him money he should be receiving. Would, would it be out of line for us to start some type of process to see if he withhold future payments till he does come up with? Is that a big stick? Do we want to throw that stick yet, or?
I don't think so.
Um... Well, I've seen work on this project about three years, and it...
About every two years, it becomes a hot topic again.
And usually the question, uh, is basically issue debt on this, on behalf of Ward. Uh, every time we've been through that problem, we've had a hard time finding out what the cost, like what Kathy was saying, financing costs, um, that, that actually, that the plan says that you can capture. We have not reimbursed some of those because the, the paperwork that we got was, was simply a spreadsheet with, you know, personal inheritance payments and amortization schedule. Uh, there, it, it wasn't any formal documentation or anything. So, it's kind of hard to make heads of tails about which, which piece of the puzzle is, you know, actually the financing costs, or if there's a mistake on this. We have poured through these documents over and over, and it's taken quite a bit of time. I don't know if we can just completely stop payments on it. That's part of the earlier discussion that, that I mentioned with the, the lake and property, uh, being switched over. Um, that's just not a question that I'm answering yet.
So what's going to happen when we don't do anything? Just another empty lot? To go and work with him, what would be the next process of happening?
Oh, I think we just need to, uh, develop, I think about, yes, the, I think about this situation, the bridge is completed on the development. He'll hit the reverse, um, he, he paid upfront, so he gets the reverse out of the revenues that he creates. Uh, that's about the, the most leverage that you can give somebody to have financial risk on their end. If you issue debt on behalf of the developer, then we're taking on the rest. But I, I don't know what more to do, um, on this, except continue to encourage Mr. Ward to fill those buildings, uh, to be occupied. But I think that's something that we already...
Green Valley has that problem all over, not just there.
Well, we are, um, consistently looking for that spot, so...
Anyway, I live on Main Street. Never seen an empty, I've never seen a so empty as here been.
So he basically just has eight years, he's got to do something to get his mind back, or he's done.
Twenty years. Basically, six and a half years.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years.
It's twenty-three years, but it's from two thousand three. So, twenty, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So, just out of curiosity, where, where would another twenty-seven thousand square feet of retail or office space and another eleven of these villas be built? If, if he were to somehow be held to what the original plan requirements were?
Well, I don't know where, but basically, this, this plan, I mean, the building of the years, and that's one of the problems.
Uh, there's some out, outlots still there, I mean, there's a big one there on the corner.
Yeah.
Big lot there on the corner, but that's probably only five or...
Um, the property that he's building right now is to Edward Jones.
Yeah, Edward Jones is the newest one.
And that's, uh, who is, but the...
Just a lane behind that.
The property on that, um...
There's no tax revenues per se from Edward Jones office.
No, yeah.
Probably tax, that's why.
The fees are so low because there's quite a few businesses down there that don't generate tax tax. It's mostly full of retail. And there's, uh, CPAs, uh...
Library.
As of the public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on this? Okay, now to close the public hearing. Up next, we have ordinance sir.
Bill B seventeen dash twenty-four, mayor, an ordinance calling an election in the city of Green Valley, Missouri, on April three, two thousand eighteen. First reading, Bill B seventeen dash twenty-four.
I move that we accept bill number B seventeen dash twenty-four for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alderman Bannan, fix up bill B seventeen dash twenty-four for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading, Travis Second. Take it, Alderman Cotton. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, staff is just submitting this in order to stay in line at the filing deadlines for the general municipal election that we're going to hold on April third of this year. One thing that I brought to your attention, uh, via email this last week, was that as, uh, we were researching this year, we found that the code had never been updated. For those of you that, that were here or remember, uh, the city switched to a lottery process for determining the order of candidates on the ballot back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Uh, the code was never updated to change that, and the actual current code says the city clerk shall keep permanent record of candidates, um, the office for which they seek election and the, the date of their election, and their name shall appear on the ballot in that order. So essentially, I wanted to let you know that in order to follow code, um, this year, we are going to be placing them on the ballot in order that they were filed, unless the board wishes to change that to the lottery style that we've practiced for the last several years, in which, uh, we will need to pass an ordinance updating that section of code.
Didn't know why they changed this, but...
Somebody came up and registered before we were supposed to. What was said? I said, I believe the rumor in that was stated that they changed because somebody came up and registered before the time was supposed to be registering. So they could be first. And then they came in the side door, actually. Yeah. And my recommendation would be that everybody comes in the front door. Nobody comes in the side door. Well, he came early, and I know that. I don't know that we would need to go to a lottery system as far as I'm concerned.
I've always got the worst draw, so it doesn't help me. I've been in the middle, or I...
Okay, well, that's, that was just kind of a disclaimer, I wanted to make sure everybody understood, so, um, this election will be for, uh, an alderman for Ward one, two, three, and the mayor for a two-year term. Any other still questions? All, do you know, all fair, please say aye?
Aye.
All post same sign?
Six zero, first reading, mayor. Second item will be resolutions. They are, resolution R seventeen dash thirty-nine, resolution by the Board of Aldermen, City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the allocation of one two thousand seventeen fiscal year meeting salary of each elected official totaling four hundred and fifty dollars as a donation toward the senior holiday gift basket program. First, no, resolution seventeen dash thirty-nine.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution number R seventeen thirty-nine as read.
I have motion, Alderman Coleman, to approve resolution R seventeen dash thirty-nine. Travis Second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bannan. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just simply the resolution that you directed staff to, uh, prepare. Do you know, do all fair, please say aye? All post same sign?
Six zero, mayor. Resolution R seventeen dash forty, resolution by the Board of Aldermen, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to amend the agreement for environmental services between City of Green Valley and Jackson County, Missouri to include aquatic venue inspections. Resolution R seventeen dash forty.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution seventeen dash forty as read.
I have motion, Alderman Haley, to approve resolution R seventeen dash forty. Travis Second?
Second.
Take it, Alderman Coleman. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, if you recall, we've been working on this program for, uh, quite a while with Jackson County. I'm going to let Mr. Davies discuss the program and the, uh, agreement that, that we're amending.
Uh, mayor and board, if you recall, they've seen with, uh, Jackson County Department, well, I was here a little over a year ago and presented to you all a new initiative that they're implementing involving the inspection of aquatic venues. I'm up to this point, obviously, they have food, uh, establishment sanitation program, um, and they have, uh, some home type wastewater management program as well as animal control they provide to municipalities in Jackson County. Um, that agreement was entered into by the City of Green Valley back in August of two thousand and seven. And so this is in essence amending that agreement to include aquatic venues. So you're looking at pools, uh, water parks, hot tubs, spas, um, and, and they're categorized in different categories. Category one is those pools, hot tubs, uh, spas, so forth, that are, uh, ran by municipalities and are, are offered to the public. Category two are those same items, but they're private, so it's those, uh, aquatic facilities and hotels, hotels, HOAs, things of that nature. And then category three is your splash pads or your, uh, kind of your zero depth, uh, spray grounds and, and things of that nature, so... And as in this program now offers municipalities a, a aquatic venue inspection, not only with the facility, um, in addition to the facility's restrooms and showers, but it's also in essence inspection of the operations to include your lifeguards, their certifications, uh, your water chemistry, um, storage of your chemicals, and, uh, and basically your facility design and safety standards. So, and as in, this is what this, this program involves, um, right now, Jackson County comes out, inspects our concession stand, community center, uh, and makes sure, you know, that we're following code, but also ensures that our staff have the food entrance permits and are operating, uh, safely and effectively. And now this, just now in essence include our aquatic facility as well. We will answer any questions that anyone may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Is there a cost associated with this?
Um, there is. Now, for municipal ran, uh, aquatic facilities, there would be no fee to, to, for those, uh, permits. But those facilities that are privately owned, like with hotels or hotel, so forth, there is a, a cost to get your, to get your permit.
If we did not approve this, then they wouldn't be able to do those inspections in Grand County.
Um, you know, I know this is passed in Jackson County, um, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent certain that I have an answer to that question. Um, I know that they've requested that we do, you know, sign off on, and a lot of municipalities have up to this point. But that would be a question that I'd have to, to ask.
Could you kind of be like stopping food inspections, can we? I mean, we can't stop those necessarily, can we?
You know, I think it, it would be opening ourselves up quite a bit from a liability perspective. We didn't have some, some type of governmental entity inspecting our restaurants and absolutely convenience stores and so forth, I...
I mean, Jim, do you know, I mean, how that would work, I mean, do they have the rights to still come in and inspect the pools even if we don't pass it?
I don't know. I haven't even looked at it, didn't know about it. From that perspective, I would agree with Shannon that probably it's certainly wise to have somebody else providing the inspections. I'll give you just off the cuff, I would think, yes, they would have the authority in the interest of public health and welfare. It makes sense to do that.
I really think this is probably long overdue. I mean, the advantage of our facility is that the entity that we contract has all the certifications and all their own facility reporting, and it's a daily, a daily thing. Now, we have a third party kind of watching over them. There's probably not another aquatic facility in the City of Green Valley that is as thorough as we are with our safety and so forth, and our testing and qualifications and so forth. So, I think when it comes to, you know, your hotels, your hotels and the HOA pools that we have in town, this, there's nothing but positives with this, in ensuring there's a safe swimming environment.
It's also affected by our insurance coverage and liability, but we have, that's better for us, the way you're doing it, isn't it?
Yeah, for our facility, yeah.
The concern I had was back even when we talked about it before, is that there were some of the HOAs out there and so forth concerned about the additional costs. If they're running the facility proper, now they get inspected and paying a fee in Jackson County for this, for this service to come in and test them once or twice a year, and then if there's a small issue, depending on what it is, you know, they could be closed down or whatever. And I'm not sure we've got all the answers how that's going to affect the private industry out there, the hotels and the, and the schools and stuff, so it just, and then the other thing is that when I look at the fees, it's like it looks like it's just a revenue generating thing for the Jackson County Health Department, so they can make more money. I disagree that we want to make sure our pools and aquatic systems are safe in our community. How we go about doing that, you know, is still up to debate in my mind, whether we want Jackson County to do it or just some city ordinance requires an inspection by some certified person, whether it be, in essence, it has to be Jackson County. So that's, that's my concern. If we pass this or not, whether Jackson County would still have the authority over them, and I'd like to, if we don't have that answer tonight, I'd like to table this till we can have that answer.
I have a motion for, motion from Alvin Arnold to table Resolution R seventeen dash forty-one, till we can get further information regarding, not forty-one, forty, sorry, throw one, seventeen forty, till we get further information regarding, you know, if they still have the right to do it or not. Travis Second.
Second.
Second Alvin Bannan. Any discussion on the motion to table?
Just to be specific for Shannon, you'd like us to report back on if they have the authority to perform these, or if this is something that's better done by the municipality, correct?
Well, I think even if, if we do not pass it, do they still come in and do it?
They still come and do it, and if we don't pass it and they can't, would we want to consider our own option to make sure those facilities are safe, and put it still back on them, yet they could find their own contractor that would come in and test and submit whatever is required to the county for that.
And additionally, it would, it would be helpful to know ahead of this, what kinds of fees are going to be imposed on these homeowners associations, and whether classification of other private bodies of water there are, that are, that would be impacted by that.
Any other discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, all in favor of the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign.
Six zero, the motion to table, Mayor. Finally, Resolution R seventeen dash forty-one, resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with B K M Construction LLC, Green Valley's Southwest Eagles Hardaway Sidewalk Improvements. Resolution R seventeen dash forty-one.
I move that we accept Resolution number R seventeen forty-one as read.
I have motion Alvin Cotton to approve Resolution R seventeen dash forty-one. Travis Second.
Second.
Second Alvin Haley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is simply the approval to enter into the agreement so we can construct the sidewalk from the Old Town Market down to the high school. Any additional questions can be answered by Mr. Arroyo.
If you guys remember back in two thousand fourteen, the city went towards MoDOT for TAP funding for a sidewalk extension from Old Town Market to Kirby Road at the intersection where the signal is, and we were awarded one hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred, up to one hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred. And so this is basically, in two thousand fifteen, July of two thousand fifteen, the board had approved administrator to get into a contract with MoDOT for those TAP funds. And so this is a project that has now come to fruition. This is on October eleventh, we took bids, explicit bids for this project. We received seven bidders. This was the low bid. We have looked through all their references. MoDOT also has to provide concurrence to this award. And so, keep in mind, this was eighty-twenty grant, so the city pays twenty percent, the state covers eighty percent of it, so up to one hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred. So what that would mean is that out of the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, the city's portion would be thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. So that's essentially, even though the resolution, it's a reimbursable grant, so essentially what happens is once construction starts, the contractor submits their payment, we're required to pay that payment, and then we submit that to MoDOT for reimbursement. So ultimately, the city's portion's thirty-one thousand, but we do have to approve the full amount.
Anyone have any questions or discussion?
I, I do, kind of related. Does this touch the easement issue that we were talking about a few weeks ago, as far as the school district needing to grant the easement, is this for that sidewalk?
Yes, yes.
So this is going to go up in front of the high school and add to the whole crosswalk safety and pedestrian safety.
Correct. This includes the sidewalk as well as the pedestrian heads, the actual push-button pedestrian heads and crosswalks at Kirby.
Any other questions or second? See none, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. I would see the ordinance as a resolution.
Next up, the administrative staff reports.
Mr. Mayor, we'll start with Mr. Davies.
Just a few things. We had our midannual trailer treat event, it's passed on October twenty-eighth, I believe, when it was, Saturday night, it was a very cold night. We still had a great turnout considering the temperature. A lot of work went into this event, among all departments, works in red, public works, police, the VIPs, the administration, and all hands on deck in it. We added a few things to the event this year, one of which is the hayride route that we provided. We had two wagons that were completely decorated, but we also had scenes along the hayride route, which was the east of the trail, which was, we had last year. So, the citizens seemed to enjoy that, and it was a nice attraction added to the hayride event itself. But all in all, we felt like weather considering an important football game the same night. It was a pretty successful evening. We had quite a few vendors, how many vendors?
Nine or thirty.
Thirty. Thirty vendors were sent along the trail. We also had donation cans located along the site for the Green Valley Assistance Council. All of them were pretty happy with, with the event, and now getting geared up for the holiday festival I'm going to, later this month. And then one other item I had, and I'm sure most of you are aware of it, one of the projects that the park board's been working on for quite some time is the trail along Dillingham Road. In essence, it connects Woodbury Neighborhood to Rosewood Hills. Obviously, Prairie Ranch Elementary is in between, so it's a real critical connection as far as pedestrian connectivity among two pretty heavy populated areas of community. This project started, oh, I think, construction began about a month ago. Just this past Friday, the pedestrian bridge was installed, and the public works has started laying the, coordinating the asphalt for the trail that extends from Dillingham Road North to Persimmon Drive at Rosewood Hills. So, our hope is that by the end of this week, we'll have that section filled to where the existing sidewalk on Duncan Road now connects to existing sidewalk on Persimmon, and we now actually have a signaled and signed official crosswalk that safely allows people to cross Duncan Road. So, we're pretty excited about that project, and we plan on hopefully over the next couple of weeks having a, kind of a ribbon cutting for that section.
What's that?
Couple months ago, we let you know that we were looking into emailing the water bill. We had some customer interest in that, and we're getting ready to try and test. The problem we're having is how do we get all the flyers that we mail in our water bill to those customers that get their bill by email? So we're working on testing the, putting the hyperlink to those flyers on our webpage on those bills, so they can just click on those and go get to that flyer if they don't get it in the mail. And we're hoping to get that tested and have the enrollment forms go out by the end of the year to people that want to sign up for email bill.
May I ask a question? I do believe we were fighting to keep a post off the chair a while back, and this is beginning to worry me. That's a lot of mantle to take away for the year.
But we get a lot of requests for it. People want, don't want paper bills, they want them all emailed, so it's kind of.
Well, those that want, they can have them and run them.
Right, the other ones will still be getting, it won't be mandatory, it'll be purely selection of what you want.
Nothing else, Mayor? Okay. Next up, the Board of Alderman reports in comment. Alvin Arnold.
November twenty-first, at two P M., the Central Jackson County Board will do recognize my retirement, who else will do the front of ten? There's a lot of people's work scheduled, and understood.
Two, yeah?
Yes, two. It'll be, I think they'll have a little bit of a regular board meeting and then during the year.
Yes, where?
At the Station Three, there on the outer road. Unless the numbers get too high and have to move, so we don't see that happen.
Like, is this a business center?
Yeah.
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Coleman?
Yeah, I had a gentleman talk to me this evening, as a matter of fact, his name is Daniel Brown, and he had a concern. He's responsible for cleaning and mowing over by the theater, and he's been having some issues with the theater not putting their trash in the trash cans. They've been putting it on top of their dumpsters, and the wind is blowing it out all over the property.
Like their dumpsters are full, or just not opening them?
It looks as though, because he took pictures, that they are putting the trash because they're just not, the kids.
Not getting in there and opening it up?
Yeah. And so, I told, he said he's been picking up two five gallon buckets of trash every time he goes out there, and he showed me pictures, it's pretty bad. So, I'm going to go out there and talk to him tomorrow, but I would just like to also have the city maybe mention it to him if they could, thank you very much. And then also the bridge, Shannon, that I've actually go by there daily. It was really cool watching them put that up, and, and it looks really nice, so.
We're really proud of it, like we use quite a good deal.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Alvin Haley?
Nothing at this time.
Alvin West?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alvin Bannan?
I just had a few things. You know, we, we talked earlier in our meeting about the April elections. The school district will also have a ballot initiative for an eleven and a half million dollar bond issue that will largely go, hopefully passes, to serve additional expansion of the high school. School district has bids out now for an addition on the Early Childhood Center, located up on the central office property there off the, I think there. Next, the school district's annual performance report came out, and it's always one of those things that, the results of that are what's called embargoed for thirty days, so it won't be maybe until early part of December that we'll see some, some released information for that. But the early indications are that all those normal metrics of graduation rates and attendance and SAT test performance and all those kinds of things continue to trend upward. Just a little feedback on what's going on with the school district there.
Is that a report available on their website?
Once the results can be released, the, the state requires districts to hold on to those results for some crazy reason. I guess for those districts who are anxious to get that information out, it's always good to tell a good story.
Yeah.
Maybe for those that are in a different, cast in a different light, maybe they're glad they have to hang on to it for a while. The other thing I wanted to inquire about was just with some of the public feedback after the board voted on the award of the contract for support of the animal services, you know, it seems like a few voices that had contacted me about that were largely concerned. They didn't have an opportunity to come up and voice an opinion about that prior to the board's vote. And I was curious if there was a way that we could at least somehow try to publish for the public a bit, a different level of transparency with what kinds of RFPs are out there, that the city is either opened up for taking bids or accepting proposals or qualifications for, so that at least, once we've acted on a, on a given matter, it's done, and the opportunity for public input is virtually nonexistent. So, I was just curious if that was something that could be considered or, or looked into in some way that we could have a little more transparency into what the city's bidding and who all the participants might be and those kinds of things.
Yeah, so, as we go through that, that process and thinking about where we can make it more publicly available, I think probably the bids could be made available through social media. We currently advertise the bids.
They're on the website.
On the website and newspaper of record, so right now, that's the examiner. Maybe if we tried to include that on, in social media as well, that way, you know, folks could see what's out there, see what's being bid. I know there's, there's a point, once the bids come in, we tabulate the bids, we try to, we try to keep the city in the best position, once we have the bids tabulated, to be able to move on to a different bidder if needed and negotiate, which is why we usually, you know, we usually won't send out. usually, you know, we usually won't send out, uh, information to the respondents until the board's actually awarded the bid. We've talked about maybe trying to perfect that, I, it's one of the, actually, one of the provisions in the Sunshine Records makes, makes bidder, uh, requirements and information, it's a sealed record until the contract's actually executed, that way the city doesn't, um, lose leverage or get taken advantage by someone who, who may know, you know, who the, who the winning bidder is going to be, or who we've selected before that, that's actually happened. Uh, but I think the, the social media side of it is probably an area that we could, we could increase presence on.
Well, e- even if it just were something as simple as, as a bullet point that, um, you know, I don't know what, I don't, I don't remember how we titled that, that service that we awarded, you know, control support or whatever it was, you know, if it was just a bullet point that the city was accepting proposals for animal control support services and left it at that, at least, at least there was something out there that these voices that seemed to come from everywhere after this award was made, that, uh, you know, and it's hard to defend something when, when, I suppose, maybe they never had a chance to really make their, their opinions heard ahead of time. And, uh, last thing, uh, the, the school district has hired a consultant to do a, a pretty extensive demographic study, um, geared more at master planning and, uh, some of these bond issues that, that I talk about are all geared at the high school, but there's a time coming here, probably pretty soon, when another elementary school or other additions to the middle school up north or something like that will be needed, so, um, I'll endeavor to share those demographic, the, the results from the study with, with you all, if you would be inclined to see, you know, what those growth, growth numbers look like, so, that's all.
Uh, next up, mayor's reports. Uh, the only thing I have is I just wanna thank staff for all the work with, uh, with Trailer Treat, I know that a lot of hard work went into that, and I was really pretty presently surprised with the crowd we had, I really just think we would have that many to show how cold it was, but, I mean, it was still pretty, pretty steady and the line was pretty backed up, so, you know, I think, so I thank everyone for all that, you know, a lot, a lot of you stayed out there all day long in the cold, and when I first got there, you know, I thought Shannon had this really cool makeup job going on his hands, and I'm like, man, Shannon went crazy with the fake blood on his hand, well, it wasn't fake blood, he had actually cut himself or something, but I was like, man, he's kinda getting the character a little early in here today, isn't he? (laughing). And Sarah's like, no, that's real blood, I'm like, oh.
He added some real hand, bloody hand, for it.
Yeah?
Making a fit.
Yeah, so I just wanna thank everyone for all the hard work on that. I know we do have a need for exec personnel, get any other items for personnel cover? All right, so Alvin can motion, then adjourned, is the executive session for personnel. Alvin Arnold, second somewhere?
Second.
Alvin Coleman, any discussion? All right, see none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alvin Arnold. Alvin Cotton?
Yes.
Yes, Alvin Coleman?
Alvin Haley?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Alvin Bannan?